Welcome to the Monday, January 10th, 2022, special meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 6th, 2022, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Rodriguez, can we take a roll?
Mr. Albinis?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Beeter? Mr. Marini?
Here.
Ms. Nurse? Here. Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Hio? Here. We have a form.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have one resolution before moving into executive session. There is one board member that is still not able to attend, and there's a resolution to allow remote participation in this meeting. I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Hillsborough Township Board of Education Board has been notified by board member Allison Lanning-Beater that she is unavailable to attend the meeting this evening due to unforeseen circumstances that prevent her in-person participation in the meeting; and whereas the Board operates most effectively when all board members are present to participate in the meeting and to vote on the actions set forth on the Board's agenda; and whereas the Board has the legal authority to permit board members to participate remotely, providing they are present and participate for the entire meeting; now therefore be it resolved that the Board authorizes the absent board member Allison Lanning-Beater to participate in the board meeting this evening by remote via telephone, speakerphone, or an alternative form of remote communication, provided that trustee Lanning-Beater can hear the discussion that takes place at the meeting by other board members and members of the public, and the public can hear the comments and vote of trustee Lanning-Beater who is participating remotely. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the Board?
Are we allowed to know if this is a quarantine issue?
I'm not sure if I can reveal that publicly due to HIPAA concerns, but she is unable to attend the meeting. And this is for, again, this week only. This does not persist beyond today. If no other questions, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Albinis?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Trigio?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution.
Okay, so I will dial her in for now. Give me one second. Hello, Allison, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, you are now in the meeting. Your attendance has been approved.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
So at this time, we will move, we will motion to move into executive session. I will do the following. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that the public body may exclude the public from the portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section B, 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey, as follows: Number one, the matter to be discussed are personnel matters, a legal matter, and a contract matter. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public where the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now moving into executive session, and we'll be back at approximately 7:30 PM. Thank you. Welcome back to the special meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, Monday, January 10th, 2022. Ms. Rodriguez, can we take a roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Albinis?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
We have a form.
All right. As in addition to the agenda, we have two walk-on items that we'd like to announce before moving into comments from the public. Resolution: Approve the acting superintendent's recommendation to, one, appoint Paul Roth as interim school business administrator and approve the employment agreement effective January 11th, 2022, subject to approval of the Executive County Superintendent at a per diem of $750. Number two, approve the agreement with Summit Management Solutions, Inc., at the rate of $150 per hour. Public disclosure: The principal of Summit Management's sister is employed in a support staff position in the business office. The Board will ensure this employee is not supervised by any principal of Summit Management or the interim business administrator. We'd like to announce those. And we will now move into comments from the Board and public. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the Board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district per Bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forum are not structured as question-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the Board. In instances where the Board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein do not permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Are there any comments from the public regarding the action agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the action agenda that I just read. I would like to ask if there's any comment from the Board. Okay. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call on these two motions. We will separate the two motions. So motion one, which is appointing Paul Roth, if you could take a roll. You have comments on the individual?
I think a motion.
Oh, sorry, motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comment from the Board? On the first, no?
Mr. Albinis?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
This is for Paul Roth, correct?
Yes.
Epstein.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Trigio?
Yes.
Motion passes. The second is about the agreement with Summit Management Solutions at the rate of $150 an hour with the public announcement that there is a conflict that we will address. Can I take a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion by the Board? All right, we'll move on to roll.
Mr. Albinis?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Eileen Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Thank you. All right, we will now move into school board ethics training.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Fogarty. I'm the attorney for the Hillsborough School District, and I am here tonight with the privilege of presenting the Board with their annual ethics training. And I apologize for my back to the audience. This ethic, the ethics training, is required on an annual basis. The purpose is to, hopefully, the takeaway is for board members to understand their principal role as policymakers for the Hillsborough School District and to delineate the role of the Board from the role of our administrators in the district. So I want to begin by talking about where your powers are derived from. Maybe. So the role of the Board is essentially determined by specific statutes which are covered under the education statutes, which are commonly referred to as Title 18A of the New Jersey statutes. What's most important for me to emphasize here is that the powers and the authority of the Board must be expressly stated in those statutes and in those regulations. And what I mean by that is that there are no implied powers. So if the statute doesn't authorize you to do a specific thing, then generally, the Board does not have the authority to interpret the statute and to imply other authority. The Board is required to enforce the rules of the State Board of Education, to make policies for their own governance and the management of the schools, and they are also required to perform all acts and all things consistent with law and the rules of the State Board for lawful and proper conduct, equipment and maintenance of the school district. Again, all express authority. So the Board does things like approve the curriculum that meets the New Jersey student learning standards. They adopt a budget annually that provides for a thorough and efficient education. They hire the necessary certified personnel to educate the district students, and they develop policies for the management of the school district. None of these actions that the Board takes are not taken alone. They take them upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. So whether we're talking about curriculum proposals and approval, presentation and adoption of a budget, the hiring of individuals, all of that requires a recommendation from our acting superintendent. The only exception to that with regard to the hiring of personnel, the one and only time that the Board has the ability to essentially override the superintendent's decision is with regard to the nonrenewal of employees. Once an employee is nonrenewed by the superintendent, that's determined to be a final action. However, if the employee appeals that decision to the Board, requests an informal appearance, the Board is able to reverse the superintendent's decision in that one and only instance with regard to personnel. So whether it is disciplinary action, the withholding of an increment, the employment of staff, the transfer of staff from one building to another, all of that requires Board action, but the Board cannot take that action without an affirmative recommendation by the Superintendent. Important to say that the Board is a unit, not a collection of individuals. Members are expected to share their opinions, but the Board, once the Board elects a single course of action by majority vote, even those who may be dissenting members of the Board are expected to support that decision by the Board of Education. In open meetings, to preserve decorum and ensure the Board expresses a single, consistent position, the President alone speaks on behalf of the Board. They request other members of the Board to contribute, but ultimately, the President speaks for the Board, and the President has the ability to issue statements to the press on matters of general public importance that involve, that involve the Board. We all come to this process with particular expertise, particular talents, but that doesn't necessarily dictate the Board's action. You may come here with a financial background. You may come here with a human resource background. You may be an attorney or a physician or an educator. Ultimately, the Board must deliberate over those decisions. They should not be influenced necessarily by your particular expertise. We hear the opinions of the Board. We deliberate. We make a final decision. Members represent the district in the interests of the township's schoolchildren and residents. We have to comport ourselves professionally at all times, whether here, in this public forum, or outside of the public forum when we're dealing with posting on social media. We are still expected to comport ourselves professionally with regard, with regard to any of our communications as board members. To preserve the Board's credibility and ensure that it operates effectively, members should avoid, among other missteps, airing personal grievances in a public forum. The Board should present as a unified team with personal conflicts resolved privately. Relying, we should not rely upon rumor or innuendo, especially called from social media outlets or unsubstantiated anecdotes. Shouldn't grandstand, self-aggrandize, or diminish other members, whether in public or in private. Remember that the powers of the Board and the authority of a Board are not coextensive. We have Board policies that reflect the ethical responsibilities of our Board members. So Board Policy 0146 says, "A board member does not possess individually the authority and powers that reside in the Board of Education. No board member by virtue of his or her office shall exercise any administrative responsibility with regard to the operation of the school or as an individual command the services of any school district employee." What does that mean? What that means is that we, as Board members, do not have the authority to direct the superintendent, to direct members of the administration, to direct members of the teaching staff, our educational support employees. Doesn't matter how laudatory we think that that direction may be. We come into a building. We're not satisfied, perhaps, with the condition of a restroom. Board member has no authority to direct a custodian to go in and clean that restroom. Don't have the authority to direct the superintendent or the business administrator to produce documentation for you as an individual board member. Keep in mind that that is the role of the administration. We are the policymakers. If we're not happy with something in the schools, we direct that complaint to the superintendent. We ask the superintendent to resolve it, and only if there is not a satisfactory resolution can the Board take it up as a matter before the full Board. Board members have no supervisory authority. So one of the main limitations or restrictions on our role as board members is embodied in the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. It was enacted back in 2001. It's probably the most aggressive Code of Ethics that we have in, in New Jersey, more aggressive than the Code of Ethics for municipal employees, even for, for members of our state government. And it makes clear that there are certain standards that we must follow. And if there's a violation, any member of the public can file a complaint with the School Ethics Commission. School Ethics Commission is appointed by the governor. School Ethics Commission has the power to hear complaints. They have the power to issue an advisory opinion, and they have the power to recommend to the Commissioner of Education where they find that a board member has violated the Code of Ethics, to issue a reprimand, a censure, suspend, or in an appropriate case, in the most, obviously, where there's been the most serious transgression, to remove a board member who violated the Code of Ethics. So advisory opinions. If you have a question about what you can or cannot do as a board member, you have the ability to request an advisory opinion from the School Ethics Commission. They're actually pretty good about getting those advisory opinions out to you. As long as you submit it by the 10th of the month, they'll give you advice. So if you have a private gain-seeking opportunity, if you're running a business, if you are concerned about whether you can participate in negotiations because you are a member of a bargaining unit in another school district or you're a grievance chairperson in the school district in which you are employed, if you're concerned about what you can and cannot do with regard to negotiations or voting on a contract, you can request the School Ethics Commission to issue an advisory opinion. That advisory opinion then will guide the way that you conduct yourself as a, as a board member. With regard to complaints, I said that, I've said that the complaint can be filed by any, any member of the public. And keep in mind that the only body that cannot file an ethics complaint is you. So if you believe that one of your own members has violated the Code of Ethics, has in some way transgressed their ethical responsibilities, we, as a Board, do not have the ability to file an ethics complaint against one of our own members. That would have to be filed by an individual board member in his or her individual capacity. And also keep in mind that if the School Ethics Commission has jurisdiction, and by that I mean that we believe that one of our members has committed a violation of the Code of Ethics, we cannot, as a Board, publicly or privately sanction that board member. If the Code of Ethics has jurisdiction, only they can take up that complaint, and only they can ultimately adjudicate that. So the Code of Ethics, I'm not going to go through all of these. I do want to highlight a couple of these that are really important. And that is that you will confine your action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Our elected responsibility is to make sure that our schools are well-run, not to run them. The other provision of the School Ethics Act that is really important, and I want to emphasize that here tonight, is, is in carrying out your responsibility, that we make sure that we do that in a public forum. And by that I mean, we are governed by the Open Public Meetings Act. And so any, and any discussions that we have, any actions, any deliberations, must take place in a public forum, which is why you need to be particularly circumspect about how you communicate with each other. You do not want to be communicating in real time about board business. If you are, if you are exchanging emails with one another, you want to make sure that you do not hit reply all. You want to make sure that, and what, what? Why, why is that such a concern? It is a concern because if you are communicating in real time, if you're sending emails to one another asking for a response to something that is, that is considered to be a board business, then there are cases now that indicate that that constitutes a quorum. That would be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. And I think, one of the things that is not commonly known is that violations of the Open Public Meetings Act are not within the jurisdiction of the School Ethics Commission. They are within the jurisdiction of the county prosecutor. So a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act is a complaint to the county prosecutor. It is not to the School Ethics Commission. You want to be very, very careful about communicating so that your communications do not raise the specter that you are conducting business as a quorum of the Board. You want to recognize that authority rests with the Board. Make no personal promises as individual board members. Next, you will hold confidential matters pertaining to the schools which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals. And this goes to those things that we talk about, learn about, that are disclosed to us in executive session. What is disclosed to us in executive session about students and staff members, about contracts and security, about investigations that may be taking place must be held in confidence with fidelity. You cannot disclose that to any third party, not to family members, not to anybody outside of this Board of Education. To do so is not only potentially a violation of the Code of Ethics, it may also implicate coverage under our liability policy. Consider, for example, if something comes to you with regard to an employee, and you must take action, whether it's disciplinary action or perhaps it involves an illness or a psychiatric evaluation. That information comes to you and it's disclosed. That implicates the individual privacy rights of that individual. It may potentially result in a civil action alleging a violation of their privacy rights. And then the question that, the question that is raised is whether or not you are going to be indemnified and held harmless under the Board's liability policy. You are indemnified and held harmless as public officials as long as the actions that you take are the actions within the force and scope of your elected position. So you want to stay on the right side of this. Again, it is critical that though, that information that comes to you that is confidential be kept confidential. You have to vote to appoint the best qualified personnel recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Certainly does not mean you're a rubber stamp. Doesn't mean that if you are not satisfied with the recommendation of the Superintendent, you can certainly ask the Superintendent to go back and bring you another candidate, but you cannot unilaterally act on a recommendation without the Superintendent's recommendation. You will, you will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. And so what does that mean, very simply? That you will support your administration. You will support the employees of the Hillsborough School District. You will not publicly vilify them. You will make sure that discussion takes place in executive session about those individuals after they are given proper notice and of the opportunity to have that discussion in, in executive session. Unless, and unless they actually waive their privacy rights, all of that discussion takes place in closed session. Complaints. You receive a complaint. Whether it happens here at a public meeting, it happens on the soccer field, it happens in, in the grocery store. You receive a complaint from an individual, and there's always a desire to want to be responsive to that complaint, to do something in order to allay the concerns or to address the complaint that's been presented to you. Keep in mind that we do not have the authority, individually or as a Board, to address a complaint and to remedy it until it has been referred to the Superintendent for an appropriate resolution. It is only if she is unable to resolve that complaint that the Board can then take it off either in executive session or in public session as is appropriate. So these ethical standards, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, they're intended to maintain focus on making decisions that promote the educational welfare of the students of Hillsborough, remove the influence of politics and partisanship, protect the schools from harm, and give the educational professionals hired to run the schools the ability to do their jobs and prevent board members from administering the schools. That is what the Code of Ethics does in a nutshell. Code of Ethics for School Board Members clearly sets a limited role for board members when it comes to administration of the district. it comes to administration of the district. The role of the board is advisory and evaluative, setting the parameters of what the administrators do, and then evaluating the performance of the superintendent in meeting those parameters. So you hold the superintendent responsible to ensure that the schools are well-run. Superintendent holds her administrative staff and supervisors responsible. Supervisors hold the professional teaching staff members responsible. And so that's how it goes. The role of the board here is advisory and evaluative, and evaluative as to the superintendent's performance, not to those who are subordinate to her. Their responsibility is to ensure that your policies and regulations are carried out, but they're responsible for evaluating that performance. Remember, administrators must hold an appropriate certificate to do their jobs. No certification obviously is required by us as a board, as policymakers, and responsible for making sure that the schools are well-run. So the limited role of a board member is seen in a number of sections of the Code of Ethics. You'll confine your action to policymaking. You will carry out your responsibility not to administer the schools. You'll protect school personnel. You refer all complaints to the superintendent. What types of administrative action violate the Code of Ethics? So if you take a look at Section C, taking action that was unrelated to a board member's duty, to develop the general rules and principles that guide the management of the schools, formulating programs, being directly involved in the operation of the school, giving orders or direction to school personnel, all of those would obviously constitute violations of the Code of Ethics. Giving a direct order to school personnel, taking deliberate action that results in undermining, or compromising, or harming school personnel, or acting or attempting to resolve a complaint without forwarding it to the superintendent. All of those actions would constitute a violation of the Code of Ethics. So advisory opinion. A board member requested an opinion regarding the authority to conduct exit interviews of staff members to determine the causes of staff turnover. So here's a situation where there are a large number of people resigning from the school district. Board member, even the board, justifiably concerned about the rate of attrition. They want to find out what the problem is. The board member wants to know whether or not board members can sit in on those exit interviews. School Ethics Commission says that board members engaging in exit interviews would be a violation of the Code of Ethics. Why? Because they would be directly involved in the running of the schools. That is the responsibility of the superintendent and the administrators to whom the superintendent may delegate that responsibility. Section C, participation, would be board action outside of policymaking, planning, and appraisal of duties. Obviously, that is not the role of the board. Advisory opinion. A board member requested an opinion regarding the appropriate level of involvement for board members in the interview process. The Commission explained that one or two board members may sit in on interview committees when established by the superintendent, but must be strictly limited to functioning in an advisory role for the superintendent. The board members may not conduct the interviews. They only offer observations and assessments while knowing that the final recommendation is the superintendent's decision. The board cannot usurp the superintendent's authority to recommend hires, which is why board members have to essentially be there in an advisory or in the role as observers, because otherwise they would be part of the selection process. A board member requested an opinion regarding permission to conduct research for a PhD program using school officials and staff as subjects by interviewing and surveying certain staff members. Commission explained that this would violate the Code of Ethics. The proposed activities would lead the board member acting outside of the scope of the board member's elected duties and directing the activities of the staff members. It would blur the line of where the doctoral candidate ended and the board member begins. Even a benign request related to educational research like this would run afoul of the Code of Ethics. Board member, another advisory opinion. Board member requested an opinion regarding permission to volunteer for a school theatrical production by assisting with casting, rehearsals, and lighting. Commission explained that this would violate the Code of Ethics. Why? Because assisting with casting and rehearsals would involve directing employees, would involve selecting which students would get the roles in that particular theatrical production. It would clearly violate the Code of Ethics because board members would be involved in the day-to-day operation of the schools rather than fulfilling their policymaking function. Explaining that this type of volunteering is inconsistent with board membership, the Commission explained that directly engaging in a school-sponsored function is outside the limited scope of a board member's role. So volunteering is fine. Volunteering with a board member's child's class, volunteering in terms of the lighting or the stage sets, or doing anything that doesn't require directing staff or supervising students, all of that volunteerism is to be encouraged. But there's clearly a bright line in terms of what you may do as board member volunteers. A board member requested an opinion regarding whether volunteering as the leader of a school club, which met on school grounds, violated the code. The Commission explained that this too would violate the Code of Ethics. Being in a position of oversight and authority over students is beyond the scope of policymaking, planning, and appraisal because the role required too much contact with students, parents, and administrators. You have got to be there as a volunteer in a supportive role. You cannot be in a role in which you are required to supervise students or to direct staff in the performance of their responsibilities with regard to extracurricular activities. Superintendent of Schools, Board Policy 1220, says that the appointment of the superintendent of schools is one of the most important functions that the board performs. The board has vested the primary responsibility for the administration of the district in the superintendent. New Jersey's education statutes grant expansive authority to the superintendent to run the school district. Statute says that the superintendent shall be the chief school executive, must keep herself informed as to the condition of the schools, reporting to the board on a regular basis. Superintendent receives a seat on the board and the right to speak on all matters at meetings on the board, but has no vote. Superintendent receives broad authority when it comes to personnel matters. The board cannot appoint without the superintendent's recommendation. Code of Ethics prevents the board from taking any action on a personnel matter without the superintendent's recommendation. Superintendent is the principal advisor to the board, must ensure all aspects of the district's operation comply with board policy, state law, and district contracts, reports to the board on the needs of the district, advises the board of any changes or additions that should be made to policies, and provides the board with information to ensure that the board makes informed decisions in fulfilling its policy role. The superintendent is required to implement the district's operational action plan, to evaluate the future needs of the district, to maintain written objectives to implement the district's action plan, evaluate progress towards the attainment of the district's action plan, and report to the commissioner and to the executive county superintendent on a regular basis. To administer the district's instructional program. And to supervise the district's employees, maintenance of the physical plant, and finally, most importantly, as well, is the management of the district's business affairs, supervising the preparation of the annual budget, recommending the adoption of the budget, implementing the budget, establishing fiscal controls to ensure that district funds are expended wisely and efficiently, and reporting to the board at its next meeting of any expenditures in excess of a budgeted line item. All of that falls to the superintendent. Superintendent is the liaison to the public. And board members cannot perform the tasks that are the responsibility of the superintendent. The school administrator endorsement authorizes superintendent to do all of those things. The board is obligated to respect her authority with regard to her statutorily designated responsibilities. And so the relationship between the board and the superintendent is equally critical. Primary duty of the board to establish policies and the primary duty of the superintendent to implement those policies. Superintendent is the primary professional advisor to the board, and policy should not be adopted or revised without consulting her. Superintendent's responsible for the development, supervision, operation of the school program, the facilities, and is given latitude to implement and administer those policies in accordance with the standards that the board sets in its policies. So the board and the administration, in terms of our lanes of authority, the board's direct responsibilities are to make policy, develop plans, evaluate outcomes, not manage the school. As already said, delegated to the superintendent, delegated to the business administrator, and the business administrator also reports to the superintendent. Our relationship is intended to be cooperative, not adversarial. Board members should share their concerns with the administration in advance of our meetings. You have questions about the agenda. If there's additional information that you feel needs to be available to you before you can make decisions and exercise your responsibilities as a board member, you should request that information prior to the board meeting and make sure that it is shared with all board members. And again, if you're confronted with a complaint, you have a board policy that says that complaint must be referred to the superintendent, and that you should not act on it, no matter how compelling it may be, without an administrative solution. We have to support the staff and the administration. A violation of this command occurs when there is evidence that a board member took deliberate action which resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, or harming school personnel. We can disagree certainly with the recommendations of the superintendent, but it generally requires that board members support the superintendent in the exercise of her statutorily delegated responsibility. Criticizing the superintendent publicly or even at a board meeting would undermine or compromise the superintendent's ability, or would compromise or undermine the superintendent's ability to do her job could very well constitute a violation of this provision of the Code of Ethics. So the takeaway here is, you're the policymakers. Hold your superintendent accountable, your business administrator accountable, and ensure that they hold those who perform the duties and responsibilities that the superintendent delegates to them accountable as well. And the other thing that I, particularly for our new board members, is these executive sessions that we conduct, for only those exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act, we want to make sure that what is discussed in executive session remain confidential and doesn't compromise either the individuals or compromise the board. Any questions from board members? You're good for a year.
Okay, at this point, the board is going to move back into executive session for approximately 30 minutes, and we will return to close out the meeting, and there may be action taken.
Do you have to have another public comment since you only did the first one? Just agenda items?
Yes, we're going to have that after we return. So we'll have the second public comment session after we return, just in case we make any action, and you want to provide a public comment after.
That will allow people to comment if there's an action item.
Correct. All right. So I will read the statement for executive session. And this is a continuation of the previous, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 in the laws of 1975, provide that the public body may exclude the public from a portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain members for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. The matter to be discussed are personnel matters, a legal matter, and a contract matter. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome back to the special meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, Monday, January 10th, 2022. Mr. Rodriguez, can you please take a role?
Sure. Mr. Abaney?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Peter?
Here.
Mr. Marini?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Okay. We have a board. All right, we will be taking no additional actions tonight. We will move into public comment, second session. We very much welcome the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. And we can have public comment on any issue.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Joyce Eldridge Howard. I'm at 75 Weber Avenue. I'd first like to say thank you for selecting and acting, or is it interim or acting, business administrator so quickly. And I would like to know the second resolution, where you hired summit management. In the second resolution, would you please explain what is summit management?
So we'll make address comments at the end, if necessary.
You're going to address that at the end of the meeting? Is that what you said?
After public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Reverend Rodney Williams, 101 Everett Close. I just stand to thank you, Mr. Fogarty, for such a thorough and enlightened presentation on the Code of Ethics. I think you did a great job of clarifying for us exactly what the role of the board is and allowing us as citizens to be well-informed as to our role to see that that code is adopted and adhered to. So I just wanted to thank you for that presentation.
You're very welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Hi, it's Stefania Alakwood, Philston River Road. Obviously, I was here last week, it was a lot of piss and vinegar, that's who I am. My friends tell me that I should probably be nicer sometimes. So with that in mind, I know anecdotes aren't good evidence, but here's a little bit about me. I grew up in Edison. I'm a J.P. Stevens class of 1996 graduate. Edison and J.P. Stevens in the late 90s looked a lot like Hillsborough does right now, so much so, in fact, that probably, I don't know, a dozen people from my graduating class or thereabouts have kids in the Hillsborough schools that are the same age as my kid because we all came here, because it felt like home. And I really do mean that it felt like the same town. My best friend, since I was 12 years old, and I are neighbors. We grew up in Edison, and we are neighbors in Hillsborough. We came to the same town together. So that's the legacy that this district and this school has, that people want to be in this town. And I got to say that when I saw the things that were being said around the election time and the time it was happening and all the politics, like, yeah, that doesn't belong in a board meeting. I think I made that clear last week. But then when I really went looking through the other stuff, I had no idea, and I don't want to belabor it, I had no idea of what happened in our schools in October and November that was in the news. Like, I'm beside myself. So, education matters. I have known since I was little, I have always been like this. And there are kids in our schools who are like this, and who need to hear that it is okay, and that they are okay, and that they will be safe. I told Dr. Feltry, I am here for any kid who needs a real-life, flesh-and-blood transgender adult in their life. I am your girl, 100%. I'm here. Okay? We got to do the right things for these kids in town. And with the specter of confidence that is looming over all of you, and I know that you are well aware and don't need us to belabor that, there is a serious crisis of confidence. And to walk in, in the middle of that, in the middle of all of the shouting and yelling about the best way to keep our kids in the school, which is what we all want, all of us, all of us want our kids in the buildings, to walk in and to find these other distractions, these things that have so little to do with doing the right things for our kids, is just... That's why I'm here, and I'm going to continue to be here. And I can tell you as much or as little as you want about me, and I'm happy to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other individuals that would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing that, I will close public comment, and I will just update on the questions that were asked. As announced, we did approve Paul Roth as the interim school business administrator. In addition to that, we have an assistant business administrator effectively. That's one role that comes through that second, the summit agreement, as well as someone to work on referendum issues. So basically, we're building a collective full business office, business administrator, assistant business administrator through three individuals. I hope that answers your question. Okay, great. All right. So with that being said, we will move to adjourn... Oh, sorry, we have the board, if there's any comments from the board. No? Okay. With that, I'll take a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.